So all this special session, November sixteenth, twenty twenty. One item on the agenda is two weeks three building closure discussion. Before we get into that, please silence, shut off your cell phones and let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody that's here and everybody that's virtual or on the phone, we appreciate you. So last Friday, there was, it hasn't come out as mandate or executive order yet. The governor is looking at a freeze across the state of Oregon at different levels. I guess we might find out. The executive order has not come out yet for sure, so we don't know exactly what the mandates are. Jay's here. I had asked quite some time ago when our mandates come down from the governor's office, had him ask CIS insurance, what does a mandate mean? Mandates is statements of law. And so what we can do is we can't change law, we can make law, local law stricter than what the state law is, but we can't make it any less. So with that said, over the weekend, I interacted with the governor's office down the chain of command. We don't know until the executive order comes out exactly what's going to be mandated. We don't know if we're going to be some elements for rural areas that we might not have to follow the same as other places. So I guess for the discussion today, and I'll let the other two commissioners talk too, is what does that going to look like? What I am hearing is that the mandates may not affect county operations as far as our county government structure. So I don't want to mold that over to what the mandates come down to the private sector, but for operations as far as our departments and our governance. So hopefully there's going to be some leniency within that, but we don't know at this time for sure. That's what I've been able to work on. I have asked the governor's office to consider some of the, across the board, some of the things that they have asked businesses that are going to be shut down. Shut down, for example, buddy sitting here, he already knows this. I asked, why couldn't the gyms work at seventy-five percent just like the grocery stores and stuff? So that's moving up the chain of command, at least I asked that question on the private sector. So myself, been working on some of that through the governor's office. But the mandates coming down will be what they are. That's not a cop out, that is just what it is. I look at this from a risk management standpoint as leadership as a county. What does our insurance tell us? What do we do to stay in compliance in case, worst case scenario? We have an outbreak, there's going to be traced back to wherever that outbreak is. And how much in compliance was that business or that county or that municipality? And that's whenever it comes back through the tracing and everything, if you don't follow the mandates. So I'm talking probably quite a bit all over the board, but that's what I individually have been working on, trying to research and find out as leadership, what we need to do within the county and trying to look at this structure. We have a road department, we have a landfill, we have a general fund, we have North Lake Annex, we have a sheriff's department. We have to keep services going out there, adult corrections, I just put there. It's not one shoe fits all. So we have to try to figure out how we keep everything operating. We have to look at with public service, how we make sure the public gets what they deserve. So it's not as simple as one shoe fits all, I guess is what I'm saying. Look where I see Amy there, we got a state agency within our courthouse. We have a DA's office that has the state employee along with county employees. And so it's quite unique. So not everybody can work virtually if we go that way. Anyways, with that, that's just for the board to know what I've been working on through the weekend, where I'm at. So you guys take the floor.
I'm just kind of curious where the some department heads, what the department heads are feeling. What they're, what they're looking to.
Well, I guess I'll start.
Yes, sir.
You know, the governor's office places these mandates. And the way the sheriff's office is looking at these are, doesn't violate a person's civil rights, doesn't violate the constitution. So what we're looking at here is her two week restriction on people and not having more than six people at their house for Thanksgiving. I personally believe that violates the constitution and the amendment of the freedom to move freely. So based on that, and we have to look at it as a case by case basis. The sheriff's office will not take any action on people violating her mandate as to having family members at their homes for holidays. Nor will we jail or will we cite anybody that goes to jail without a mask on.
Somebody's buying lunch.
As long as we're sort of distancing that. The only case that I can think of that we would cite somebody is if they knowingly and willingly knew they had the coronavirus and were in a populated area with the possibility of spreading that disease. Other than that, we will take no action on people in the county. We will be closing our office. We will not be conducting routine fingerprints for businesses and see concealed carry licenses. But other than that, it will be business as usual.
So question on that sheriff, you've already made that decision without the mandate coming down. What if the mandate allows county operations to continue to operate? We are now, but you'll still close your office for two weeks.
Well, that would depend on what the commissioners are going to do as far as courthouse. If you're going to close the courthouse, we're going to close the office. Okay, you're going to keep the courthouse open, we will keep our office open. And thank you for that because I have to commend a lot of people, I believe, as far as the courthouse, as far as spit guards and we're getting better about compliance. We're doing a pretty darn good job for the moment.
The thing is, we haven't even seen the final language yet.
Nope.
And we asked for that final language on Friday. We asked for some sort of definition or some clarification, I believe Mark asked for that as well. What does this look like? What does this mean for us in terms of shutting down public offices? And they said they didn't know. And they said that they would get to us once the language came out on Tuesday, and that's tomorrow, so.
Do we have any active cases in the county right now? Or does anybody know? I believe there's two more over the weekend, I'm not sure.
So is it deployed or?
Two positive, I talked to a friend of mine, her and his wife have tested positive over the weekend. And then I just talked to Darwin Johnson and that's looking like they're going to have a positive test, but the good possibility it may happen.
Been in contact possibly. Been in contact possibly.
Been in contact, so they're self-quarantining themselves.
Hey, this is Darwin, real quick, can you all hear me?
Yep. Hey Darwin.
Yeah, so the hospital and school both contacted us about my son, his third grade class. That whole class is being quarantined because one of the kids in that class had contacted the family member who did test positive. Since then, that kid and his mom have also both tested positive. And so my family's been told to be in isolation or quarantined, I guess, for two weeks. So that's, that's the unfortunate situation I'm under right now. If any of our family starts, you know, having symptoms, then we, somebody would have to go get tested. And then they would probably presume that, you know, the whole family had it. You know, that leaves the planning department, you know, me, I was considering this meeting and needing to work from home will have to be the case for at least, you know, a little while here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dar. Other thoughts or questions?
Just to add one more thing to the sheriff's office stance, the state police will not be enforcing that either. I know that was specifically asked by a state representative to the new superintendent of the state police. And the question was specifically asked, will you be enforcing her mandate, yes or no? And the answer was no.
So, does anybody else want to say anything before I start? So terrorism is an unlawful, unlawful use of force or violence against persons or property to intimidate, coerce the government or its citizens to further certain political or social objectives. Reason I brought that up is, you can think of it as you want, but talking about COVID, I hung myself out there and I posted a thing on Facebook, a video yesterday. The odds of dying for COVID are ninety-nine percent for almost every age group except for those seventy-year-old. Seventy and older, you have a ninety-four point five something percent chance of recovery, not of death. And out of everybody that's died of COVID, God bless their soul, only six percent didn't have comorbidity. Comorbidity is, and that's actually, they had two point six percent or two point six comorbidity. In other words, everybody that died had two and a half comorbidities. Whether they had, they were overweight, they had obesity and diabetes or cancer and diabetes or different diseases. And out of six, only six percent of everyone that has died from that has had, actually died from COVID. And so you get the total number of people that died from COVID and you divide that by six percent, and that's the actual people that died from COVID. Not my words, that's CDC. What we've all been following is what it says. If we suppress our businesses, it'll lead to dependence. It'll lead to dependence on government. Dependence on government leads to the loss of freedom and opens the door to communism. I can't do this anymore. I cannot morally stand where I stand and allow the government, our state government or federal government, if they do, to dictate the lives of our people, whether they can work or not. And that includes us. Now, if any one of you agree with the order, that's fine. But my gut will not allow me to do this anymore. And you have to follow your own conscience and your own moral integrity. And so no matter what the decision is from the governor, I will not support it unless she's opening up our community a hundred percent to go to work. Does that mean we should be careful? No, that's not what I'm saying. Am I saying COVID doesn't kill you? No, because it has killed people. But your odds of living are almost a hundred times better than it is of dying. I found out over the weekend, I have a son-in-law in one household and a grandson in another with COVID. If I believed the media that my kids were going to die, I'd be a mess right now. But I don't. Not only do I base my faith on it, I base the scientific facts on it, right? And science says, virtually no kid under nineteen's died from COVID. None. So you can't tell me that it's in my family and it's not in my family and so I'm decided to think this way. I can't, guys, I can't do this. I can't allow our community to suffer anymore. And am I going to be beat up from it? You damn right I am. I'm already getting beat up. I got big shoulders. Won't be the first time. But I will not allow this to happen. And so no matter what the deal is, I'm going to give you the choice to search your own soul and your own heart, your own moral attitude to make that decision yourselves. We're called to serve the public. And if you think you can serve them from home and that's what you need to do, then do it. I'm not going to knock you for it. But I think we all need to be at work. And being standing strong together as one force against, so that's all I have to say for our commissioner. Questions? There been nothing further? You have anything to say?
When are commissioners going to make a decision as to whether the courthouse will be closed or open?
As soon as we find out whether or not the state has figured out what they're going to do or demand us. Right now, there's no decision to really be made. Honestly, I mean, I'd love to make a decision, tell you exactly what I think. But I think it'd be, I'd be jumping again. I wouldn't want to do that right now until I find out exactly what the state's decided. Being that we get answers like, I don't know currently, it's a little frustrating, especially being that they went on TV and they told the whole state that they had a plan. We truly don't know what that is. So once we figure that out, and I, we just got an email from the state, from Julie. They're asking to have a meeting with Leah Horner and Dr. Seidlinger and us and our director of public health throughout the state. And they'd like to answer any questions we have. And I imagine we'll probably have a lot. Will they listen to anything that we have to say? Will it impact anything? Probably not. I think the state's made it pretty clear, they don't really care what counties in Eastern are going to have to say. That's my opinion.
So, so I, I appreciate that, but I think the reason why you don't see the mandate yet is because a lot of commissioners across the state ask why this and why that. And I think they're relooking at, I think the governor's ready to put the mandate out. There's not only commissioners that are getting hold of our connections at the state level, but we have senators and representatives. And so I believe that they're relooking at all those mandates coming down, trying to adjust those. Because one shoe doesn't fit all. So I believe we are being, and I believe that's the slowdown in the mandate. I visited with the state agency just at twelve-thirty and they didn't look, they expected it out by now. There's a lot of questions been asked. I'm very hopeful, very hopeful that some of these counties that are in phase two like us in that our numbers are low, that we keep as much normal operations as we can. And that's what, continue to push for sheriff, continue to push. Let's keep Lake County as normal as we can under these situations. We're not all known, county quarantined outbreaks are so bad. So I'm anxious to hear what those mandates are. But I think a little bit of the slowdown is because there's a whole bunch of us calling and asking legitimate questions. Why is Lake County going to have to be the same as well-known counties? Can you build in some leniencies based around our numbers? And if we spike and if we get a bunch of those and all the tracing shows that we have a big problem, which fluid, like we said from the very first, we have to be able to adjust to that as government the best we can. Right now, we're doing pretty good. But that's, that's mine, it's a little bit, I'm just going to make a step on you, but that's, that's the direction I've been working is, hey, let's get that into the governor's office. Let's find out how we can change for Lake County. So I think there's been some slowdown on it a little bit.
So her mandate that was going to be initiated on Wednesday, that's still up in there?
No, no, it will be. It will be on Wednesday. It's just exactly what she's going to initiate on Wednesday, it's up in there.
Well, I personally, this might be a little bit of a radical approach, but I think you have to see what she has to say. If it's reasonable, there's no reason why we should not comply with a reasonable mandate. If it's unreasonable, at some point, we need to stand our ground. And I don't know what that looks like. But I think as a group, like Mark is saying, we need to stand our ground. Otherwise, we're going to get pushed right off the mantle.
Yeah, I guess where I'm at is, we were, we thought we were there. We thought we were making ground, we thought we were being heard. Not to contract for anything, my fellow commissioners have to say on this. But we, we had a phase one plan, we had a phase two plan, we were moving through it. Yeah, Lake County had a few additional cases and yeah, they're sporadic because you can't trace them back because people have no incentive to tell the truth as to where they got it, who they were in contact with. And the state doesn't have those incentives built into it.
I would even be apprehensive to determine whether the cases, as they say, are positive or truly positive.
And most of the community, in fact, I would say majority of county could put the agreement. But that's not my call. I'm not a doctor, I'm not going to prescribe medical advice, opinions or anything else. I just thought that we were on our way in a good place working with the state to try to find some of that ground that made logical sense for our geography, for Lake County, for the limited population that we have. And then all of a sudden, with no warning, no, in fact, it was just an email that was sent out to a few select commissioners and wasn't even sent out to every county, just telling us that it was going to be a statewide shutdown, regardless of your geographical location and the situation or even caseload. I was having a conversation with someone just last week when this all happened. And they asked, so how many cases do we have? Doesn't matter, we could be at zero, statewide shutdown, statewide shutdown. I thought we were, I thought we were there. I thought we were negotiating. So now we're in a different place, being asked to come up with some different rules for the courthouse. We're not even sure whether or not we still, they still apply to us. We may be exempt as a county facility in our public office.
Well, I can tell you this, the cure has become deadlier than the, than it is. We have investigated more suicides in this last couple of months than we have in years.
Judge Crawford in Troot County put out Portland got cancer, but everybody has to get chemo. That's true. And I can't emphasize enough, the chances of dying for COVID are almost zero if you're a healthy person. We got to quit looking at these deaths. We got to look at the lives and we got to start living our freaking lives. We have the right to the pursuit of happiness. Who has done that the last eight months? Enough, done. No good talking, commissioners.
Okay. A second, Mr. Schultz. So there is a lot of things can be debated about COVID-nineteen. Points you make, points that Mark makes, I make a lot of different things. And I don't like them under the cloud we have right now. But let's look at our cloud compared to Portland. We're in phase two, our kids are in school. We're operating in a much higher level even with COVID than most other counties. And so I'm open, enough is enough. What's the solution? If we make a stand, what does that mean? And I guess I'll go back to risk management wise, is if we were going to make a stand being a commissioner, and if all we're going to do, I'm going to bring in city county insurance. I'm going to have them sit down, I'm going to have our public health official come in and sit down. I want our doctors, I want our schools, I want our community partners. Everybody that a stand we make is going to impact. And come to what is the best for everybody. And what does it mean to make a stand? We can make political stands, that's easy enough to do. When we make actual stands and we do things, people are accountable for that. If we go outside the parameters of what our elected duties are, we can be personally held liable for that.
I'm not suggesting.
I know, I'm looking, I think you are taking it the same way. What I'm simply suggesting is we're putting these positions to take a stand for the people in this community. And if we just go along with the program, every time there's a stupid ass program that comes up, then we're no better than the people putting these programs into effect. I mean, we're elected to these positions, take a stand for the community. And if we're getting pushed around at some point, I don't know, like I say, I don't know what the answer is, but and I would agree, you get your community partners together, at what point do you say enough's enough? And I believe, and that's where I was going with it, exactly what you're saying is, we better bring all the people to the table, all the people that's going to be impacted by this and make an organized stand if that's the case. If that, and I agree with you, as elected official, we're here to be the voice for the other people. And that's all the people, not just one segment or the other. But I did want to give Mr. Schultz a chance to.
You've kind of cleared it up. You four, as representative of people of Lake County, represent us. What are, you keep talking about risk management. What is the risk? You're going to defy the governor, she says, total shutdown. What can you say about personal responsibility? You are elected to say yes to no according to the people. You can't be held responsible by the, by the governor if the majority of Lake County says, let's go to business as usual and quite run scared like the sheriff and Mark says. What are the consequences?
So, so you, good, good question. So we started off, the sheriff's going to shut his office down for two weeks. Now we're talking about taking a stand, keeping everything open. If we go against the mandate, we say everything's going to stay open. And we have an outbreak, worst case scenario, if somebody dies and they trace it back. And we went outside that mandate and we said, no, by God, we know better. We're going to stay open. And grandma over here died, somebody's going to want to hold somebody responsible for it. And who has the deep pockets?
How do you know grandma wasn't a diet anyway, Brad?
I, I can't predict that. But I'm telling you what really happens in the world of government is when you're in the deep pockets and you make decisions. And when I use risk management involved, we do deal with, deal with the worst case scenarios, Mr. Schultz, occasionally. And there's a stack of lawsuits that will show you that. It does happen to government because we're deep pockets. So you wanted an example, that's my example. We may go along and not have a bit of problems if we just say, business as usual. if we just say, "Business as usual." Truly, the only thing that we, we, the commissioners, can say, "Business as usual," is our county governance, is our county operations. Private sector, they have to make a decision on if they're gonna stay open, if they're gonna stay closed, or if they're gonna go against the mandates. We, we do not, you know, I guess we could, but we should not probably tell private business what to do.
Yeah, we don't tell them to open anymore, we tell them to close.
Yeah.
For me?
I said, "We don't tell the businesses to open anymore than we tell them to close." It's a, it's a very dangerous slippery slope to get.
Yes, it is.
We, we do fight to try to give them the opportunity to stay open, and we fight hard for that.
And, and I think we have for, for sure.
It's a liability.
Working with the senators and reps, we're while weekly calls with commissioners all across Oregon that join us and talk to us about what we can do. We just sent a letter saying, "Look, governor, we are prepared to have these conversations as to how to get our community back to, to a greater operation, to get our citizens back to some degree of normalcy, get our schools back open to where they need to be." Regardless of, you know, the statistics and the the charts and the numbers and everything that the state is using right now to gauge our community potential outbreak of COVID-nineteen, I don't think that they're necessarily suitable. And I think that a lot of commissioners and state reps and senators agree with me on that. I think that's one of the things that we've been talking about, and we're trying to find a way that fits and works for our community to allow them to get back to work and back in school. Go ahead, Brad.
So, no, I, I was trying not to get too far down, just trying to stay on county governance. But James's board I work with knows my frustration. We're local leaders and lawmakers that are county ordinance level. You have state reps and state senators, they're lawmakers for state law. And if there's any error in all this, is, is all I hear is there's a supermajority, or we can't go to Salem, go to work. Your state reps and your state senators are the state lawmakers. And who's catching the hill? The local commissioners. And who does state law? And I told them this the first two weeks of COVID. And they have not forced any kind of thing. I'm sorry to get too political, but the emergency order that's in place was designed, the disaster order, for a true disaster. Is designed for earthquakes, floods, and you can leverage things and get things back building. Everything from our president down to our governors across the United States are using this emergency order to set laws and mandates that was not designed for a pandemic.
No.
So our state reps and state senators should take that, get it back to Salem and say, "We need an emergency order for a pandemic, not for an earthquake." And I'm at a frustrated level, but it's different than a lot of people. My frustration is with our state lawmakers. Because they're putting this down onto the county elected officials where the, where the rubber meets the road, where we go into these businesses that, that are being impacted the wrong way. We're here state senator and state reps right now.
Yeah. So we're safe.
Every one of you guys can email them, you can call them, you can write in, you can do anything. They're the state lawmakers. So anyways, I'm sorry, I get on my bandwidth.
Well, it, it is political, and I'm gonna tell you guys something that I believe is gonna happen. The mandates, of course, haven't come out yet, we just had a draft. But in that draft, schools weren't in them, that's closed. Why? Almost all of the contacts are coming from either high school, college, or grade school. Almost always, not all, but most. So why would you close everything down and leave what's causing all this food? It's, and, and this is my political theory, is to stop guys like me from raising hell. Because when I start raising hell in the community and start saying to stand up, the governor's gonna say, "Well, we're gonna close your schools." Mark, my words.
So you heard a lot of political jargon today. We don't know what the mandates are, what it means for county governance. We have to look at, we have a lot of different departments. You know, never even mentioned the fairgrounds, you know, at the landfill, I see buddy sitting there. So as mandates come down, we have a regular work session tomorrow, we have our regular meeting on Wednesday. So we shouldn't have to run a special session, we would be able to add on to our, our regular meeting. We tried to get an email out to everybody that the mandate's come down. If there's a reason for us to make some decisions on the governance of the county operations. This is for, I'm at, commissioner, yeah, quite to see.
Yeah, it would, it sounds like you're kinda wrapping up a little bit.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I don't have a meeting for another twenty-three minutes.
No, I'll just, I'll just kinda close off with this. I, we were thinking about postponing the meeting today just because we didn't have any additional information from the state. And we weren't sure if we could even make a decision, but I don't think it's proven at this point to make a decision on any of this. But I had kinda mentioned that Jay, it'd be nice to have a meeting anyway. So if the department heads could be here and you guys could share with us what some of your concerns are and feelings that you don't wanna, I'm not gonna put anyone on the spot today or anything and ask anyone anything more. You've heard us give our spiel. You're more than welcome to come and talk to us individually, come and ask us, you know, for more info, or just just tell us how you really feel, how you think we, we ought to do. Come and talk to us. What we'd like to know. We did this meeting mainly today to hear from the department heads because you guys all have employees and other people under you that are looking for answers, that are looking to us for answers, are looking for a definitive direction forward. And so we wanna be able to give that to everyone this week. Can't give it to you today because we don't, because we haven't gotten it from the state yet. So, just wanted to put that out to all the departments. You're more than welcome to come and talk to any one of us individually and if they have anything to share. So, that's all I wanted to kinda give.
Amy, when is the chief justice order coming down, do you know?
So the chief justice will meet tomorrow with the, all of the presiding judges. She meets every Tuesday with them. And so we'll have some sort of structure tomorrow, but I don't anticipate us having everything in full effect until the following week, after everything's released.
So, um, a lot of things have been put in place up there. Are you arguing to keep things still operating because of the shills and the masks?
Yeah, so we've already put, everybody's wearing masks, including all the employees in the office unless you have a floor-to-ceiling enclosure. And so everybody has masks in the office. We're also, we, in the courtroom, we have the social distancing, we have the masks. And maintenance also did some great plexiglass, if you guys have been up there, plexiglass dividers to protect the judge as well as the defendant and some of the other people that come into the courtroom. And we're, the courts are running so far behind right now, another two-week shutdown would just disable us. And so right now, I mean, there are still things that have to be heard at ninety days, the arraignments, the incursions. Those aren't things that we can stop doing. So I don't anticipate the chief justice making huge changes to what we already have in place because we've already implemented most of what we can to make sure that we are in compliance and that we're keeping people as safe as possible. The only thing that may be different is if we have to screen people in again. And right now, we just have the verbiage at the door and are asking them to self-screen and notify us if they have the fever or something other than that.
Well, that's so important for our jail and everything, they'll keep things flowing. So I hope that the chief justice keeps your department operating.
Well, and I did, with discussions last week, I said, "As soon as we get that chief justice order, you guys will get that right off." And I, like I said, I don't know, it depends, her meeting's tomorrow at noon, so I don't know that she will have that ready because I don't know it's going to depend on, obviously, the governor first, right? And then the chief justice will fall off of that. So if we don't have it next, or this Tuesday, then we'll have it the following Tuesday for you guys. And I'll keep in touch and let you guys know exactly what's going on up in the court system.
Rachel, you need this from the department you represent?
Nothing really out of this point, I mean, that's all up in the air and I think we can't really make any decisions till we.
Create this, create a certain amount of challenges for your department also?
I think it is, as it is for everyone, so.
It's not changing much for the fairgrounds. I mean, I'm just saying, it's not changing much for the fairgrounds, only because anything that we have out there is more than fifty people, more than a hundred people, so we're just kinda shut down.
Is that you, Jay?
Yeah, it's me. I, I, I'm just gonna echo off what Rachel had to say. It is difficult to conduct business under our current predicament, but as the board is aware, we got as the board is aware, we got a complaint filed against us, so we had to follow up and we had to report back to OSHA what, what direction we were taking and how we were addressing that. And we did, and we're just now looking to the board for some direction because we're, we're, we're holding ourselves to the standard that I reported out to OSHA that we would do. And it's, it's not the, it's not the same standard courthouse-wide. So we're just looking for some direction on which way to go and how to continue to conduct business under, under the current order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else?
All right, we will adjourn in twelve minutes after two.